Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone. We're glad you're here today for this super exciting episode.
Yes, this is a very exciting episode and to join us, we also have the incomparable Colin and Julie from our team. Hey you guys.
How's it going?
Hello.
Thrilled to have you here. I hope all of you who are coming in, if you already know what the secret is today, don't say anything yet. Today, we're going to be sharing some really, really exciting news about a feature update on our platform that has been in request wishlist mode for years. I think it's safe to say years and, and so I think that a lot of you are going to be beyond thrilled today at the exciting possibilities that lay ahead for you and how you use your Get Oiling system, especially those of us who are really using Get Oiling for more than just the built-in website theme. If you're really branding yourself, if you're using your vaults, you're creating online classes, things like this. Of course, if you don't know what those things are, we've got training that we can help point you to. You'll find those on our YouTube channel as well. But suffice to say, if you're a Get Oiling user, solid chance you're gonna be very excited about what we share with you today. So I have some slides that we're going to use to go into those. But before we get into it, y'all head over into the chat. Where are you coming in from? Are you excited? Do you know? Don't say anything. Are you excited to see what this is going to be about today? Come on into the chat. We want to hear from you. We want to know where in the world you are. And let's see, we've got excitement in Wisconsin and Ohio. Keep it coming, you guys. Alright, so what I'm gonna do, because we do have, one person has signed up for a live work review. We do have a lot to get into today. I want to go ahead and run into the slides here quickly, but let's see who else we've got. Minnesota, Arizona, Ontario. Paula already knows because Paula is like our gold star super user. Hi Paula. Carmen, hi in Michigan. Hello, Dr. Brown in Kansas City. We are so excited to have everyone here today. So without further ado, we're gonna stop our video and go ahead and get into these slides that we've prepared for you to show you this very exciting new update to the system. So let's get into it. Today, we are sharing a new feature reveal. Like I mentioned, this is one that has been in the works for a while. It's been on the wishlist for a long time. So what we'll talk about today is this new exciting announcement, what it means for your business, how to use it, and then of course, we'll get into some live help and Q and A. So if you did come here today looking for help, you may or may not be excited about a new feature in Get Oiling. That's totally fine. But if you need help with something, we're here for you. Head over to the Q and A on this live call and add your questions there. And if you're watching this as a replay in the future and you would like to be able to join a live call like this to get help, get your questions answered about all things growing young living and using the web to do it. You go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession and you can be on this list to join us on one of these live calls. And if you'd like to work together on a live call, you can go to getoiling.com/web site review. And if you are in the process of getting things figured out, getting stuff started, if you go to getoiling.com/conceiers and get a hand with getting things done, we have an incredible capable qualified team to help you with all manner of tasks, builds, design, strategy, you name it, to help you get your system running the way you want it to. So let's talk, you guys, as a business with an online presence, some things are just necessary. So head over into the chat and tell me, as a young living brand partner, or if you have maybe an additional adjacent business alongside what you do with young living, what are some things that are like, when you think of something that's in the necessary column for you, where it comes to having a business that functions and shows up online? What are necessary things for you? Don't be shy, add those to the chat. I'll go ahead and start naming some of them off. A web presence, right? Having a website, a home on the web that is yours, right? That's one. Having the ability to keep track of everyone that you are connecting with. Sherry says professional looking content. Yes, absolutely. A way to contact people, Deb says. Yeah, so email, text marketing, the ability to maybe even drip out messages over a period of time. So you don't have to stuff all this stuff in your brain and remember when you need to do what, right? So there's a lot of things that are kind of necessary for us to show up online and work. And you find all those necessary things with Get Oiling, right? You've got everything that you need to put yourself out there, to attract new people, to serve the people that you have, and to scale and grow your business, right? So we made a point with Get Oiling and listening to the features that have been requests of our members for years and growing out piece by piece, feature by feature, everything that you get with Get Oiling. We have this comprehensive system, right? Well, let's take this a step further. If you're a brand partner who has a need to educate your customers and you want to do it in a leveraged way, or if you are positioning yourself as a personal brand and you have a need to engage people with professional content, then video is also something that's necessary, right? So where videos are meant to be discoverable by the public, so things that if somebody stumbled upon them and it might make them curious enough to reach out to you and they could maybe become a lead for you, then that's, you know, a place that you might, you know, a situation where you might put that video onto YouTube, right? Because that is a great place to put video so that people can discover you and you can get leads, right? But let's get real for a second. Not all content is a fit for YouTube or any social media platform, right? Depending on the extent of, you know, the depth of what you're talking about in your content, right? Whether or not maybe what you're sharing is something that's about young living, but maybe has anybody ever experienced when you're watching a YouTube video and it's about something from young living? And then it recommends videos for you to watch after from other creators? And you don't really have control over what shows up there, do you? That's like a really not great situation when you're wanting to introduce young living to someone and then they're recommended a video right after that might even negate something that you have shared with them in the video that's on YouTube, right? And that's just one example. So not all content that you create on video is suitable to put on these platforms. So there comes the question, where do we put the videos that aren't good for those public platforms? Where will those videos go? And so I'm excited to share with you guys that we at Get Oiling have now released video hosting. You now have a video manager in your Get Oiling account. Now, this means that you can host your own video content. No need to buy a subscription to another third-party provider. Your videos can be hosted exactly where you have the rest of your website content. You can embed your video on your website pages. You can put it in your online classes. And there is a really cool thing I'm excited to show you, where you can actually share these videos via email in a really exciting, engaging way. Now, it's not gonna play via email because that's just not how video and email plays together with email providers right now. But it's a really cool thing and I think you guys are gonna love it. And of course, this is something that you can use at all plan levels. And I'll break down kind of what that looks like for you and you can of course, add more as you need it. So in hosting your own video content, you can import from a URL. So if you maybe have something that's on YouTube that you don't want there, you can use the download link. If you have something that's in Vimeo or Wistia or somewhere else, you can use download links to actually just bring stuff straight over into your system. Also, if you're using the Attractwell app to manage your Get Oiling account on your phone or your tablet, or if you're simply using your Get Oiling, you're logged into Get Oiling from your tablet or your phone, you can record video that goes straight into your video manager. That's pretty cool. You can do a one-click convert from your Zoom cloud calls. And again, I'm gonna show you how this works here in just a second. You can also embed, of course, on your online, on your website and your online classes. And then there's this really cool thing that happens in email where we share an animated gif that actually sends out via email. So this can be utilized at all Get Oiling plan levels. It does require an add-on if you're at Cedar Starter. But at basic, you have 10 videos, premium has 50, pro 200 and diamond 500. And of course, with all of these options, you have the ability to à la carte add more storage, okay? And Nancy asks that can the videos be added in the blog section? Yes, 100%. They could be added on an event. They could be added on your blog. They could be added, you know, on a landing page. They could be added on custom pages. Yes, that's right. So if you need more space, if you need more than what your plan affords, and this is, I believe we're looking at a pro plan here. So all you have to do is go to your video manager, click Get More Space, and then of course, you can include the bundle of videos that you want to add on. So now you can bring everything under one roof in your Get Oiling system. And again, anything that you would want to share that isn't for public consumption is something that I would recommend using here. A video that you would want to include in a funnel is what I would recommend using here. Something that you want it to be private and only for your members. Again, that's what you get to put in here. So cool. So let's go take a look at how it works. So when we want to add new videos to Get Oiling, you can record now. You can upload from your device. You can import using a link or you can import from your cloud-recorded Zoom calls in Get Oiling, right? So if we're gonna record now, you do need to be in your phone or tablet. And so I'm actually showing you what this looks like from within the Attractwell app, but it does look the same if you're just simply using the Get Oiling website on your phone. So over here is showing you from the editor. So this could show up, this editor could show up on your blog. It could show up in a page section, on a landing page, in an event, in your vault, all kinds of different places. So this editor over here on the left, we're just gonna simply click the video icon just like you would have before when you pasted in a link from somewhere else or pasted in code from somewhere else. But instead, if we want to record something right now, we click it and then we use this Take Video option. Now, this will be using your phone or your tablet. And this is going to allow you to shoot video facing you or facing out, just like any video you would take on your phone or your tablet. Allison, the video manager is going to be under the website menu. That's over on the left-hand side. Okay, so now in the video manager, if you want to do this from the video manager, like I just mentioned, you're gonna look in the menu under website. You're gonna scroll to the bottom. There's videos. And then of course, what you get to do here is click this plus sign or click Select or Drop Videos and you choose Take Video. And this of course, is if you want to record something right now to add in. So if you want to quickly create some content that you want to maybe load into an online class for your vault, right? Then this is something of course, that you can do. Now, if you want to upload from your device, this is what if you maybe typically would meet on Zoom, for instance, and then you would download or record the device to, or sorry, record the call to your device, then you would have a file like this one. So here's like an MP4 flat file. This is saved from Zoom. And, and so I am actually checking it here, choosing that as the file to upload. And then you can actually see that the little wheel will start turning and this little progress bar will start moving as we begin uploading this video into the video manager. Now, you can also import from a link, which is super exciting. If you want to migrate your video content over from another platform, so long as there is a download link, not a link to view, but a link to download, which is available, I think, on all YouTube videos. And of course, if you have an account with something like a Vimeo, Wistia, et cetera, then you'll have downloads there. If you're moving over from something like Kajabi, you'll have download links there as well. All you have to do is paste the link, give the video a name, add it to a collection or don't, and then import it. Really easy to do just from a link. And then finally, and oh, this is so, so exciting. How many of you guys use Get Oiling's Zoom feature to meet with folks? Yes, I'm seeing those hands. Do you record your calls? Do you want people to be able to see the calls after you've recorded them? Well, as you know, or maybe you don't, but you could certainly see here on the screen, the cloud recordings that you can, you can obviously download to your device or you could download to the cloud, right? Well, those are deleted after 10 days. What if you want this to be available ongoing? Well, now all you have to do is go to your Zoom cloud recordings and click the link, copy into my video library. And then it starts downloading automatically to your library. And so after just a little while, depending on how long the video is, of course, you will then have this Zoom recording from your cloud recordings over here in your video manager. Now, you can also of course rename by clicking Rename and you can categorize them. So we have collections. They're called collections. And that's where you might want to group different types of calls together. So in this particular case, I want the Getting Started With Young Living, this video down here on the bottom. I want that to be in a category called Young Living Customer Education because I know that I'm going to be uploading or creating additional videos that are for educating customers. So I'm gonna go ahead and create this collection here. Now, you can create a collection when you're downloading a video, right? So you can actually see over here on the top left and I could, it says Add to No Collection, but I can actually type something in and create a new one. So that's, that's a new collection that's being created. We can also change, if you hit the little pencil, if we go over here to the bottom right, where it says Young Living Customer Education, if you click that pencil, you'll see this little box pop up here on the bottom left that says Change Collection for Monthly Live Event. In that particular case, of course, assuming we click that one, we can actually change, then we can change a collection that something is in or add a new one from this feature. So this is just an organization tool. And remember that when you are uploading video, not sure if it's something that you've done before, but it can take a little while to process, especially if it's a longer video. If you upload something that's an hour or 90 minutes or something like that, do expect for a little bit of time to pass before this is something that you are able to, to share and see viewable. And please do make sure after you have initiated an upload, that you don't close the tab that you're in until the upload is complete, right? So if you have uploaded something from your device, for instance, especially, if you, if you close that tab, then it is going to abort that process. So it may also then take a few minutes after you're uploaded before you can actually view the video inside of your video manager. Again, this is normal, but it's just a matter of, you know, time to process the video in the system. But once you've uploaded your videos, they can then be embedded on pages and inside your classes. So to add video to pages on your site, and this also again, will apply the same if you have a blog post where you want to embed a video, if you want to embed a video on an event page, if you want to put one on a landing page, and of course, here on a page, it's all going to work the same exactly as I'm going to show you here. What you're gonna do, just as you would have before, you're gonna click the Add Video icon. And then it's going to pop up a much larger screen, much larger box than it would have previously because you have all these great options now. So what you're able to do here is to add a video, Select or Drop. If you're using a mobile device, of course, you can add one by taking a video right there. But you could also use a link or an embed code here exactly as you would have previously. So if you do have something that's somewhere else and you're not trying to upload it into your system, you do still have those options. So you can go down into, let's just say that we do want to use one of our videos that we see here. You just click Select Video and that will choose the video. And then in Classes, we're going to do something just slightly different here. It, for those of you who know, there's a difference, right? Between the videos that are the main videos in your class. And of course, you could add additional videos in the content section. But when you put a video in as the lesson video inside of an online class, that is this new feature that you see right here where you can embed a video. Now this, I'll let you know, this is the same in terms of features as you would have seen previously, if you were using like a Vimeo or YouTube link here. You can still track the percentage of a video that someone has watched on their contact card and all that kind of cool stuff if you're using a video from inside your video manager. But basically, what we're going to be doing here is we're going to go to Upload. Of course, if it's a link from somewhere else, you hit Paste Link, just like you would have previously. But you go to Upload, you select your video and then that becomes the video for your online class. Now, once you have your video where you want it to go, you have three different ways that you can share your videos stored in your Get Oiling Video Manager. So first, that's of course, on Pages and Online Class Lessons, of course, like what I just mentioned to you in the previous slides. And basically, what you're going to do in those cases is you're going to take the link to the page or the blog post or the event or the landing page or wherever that video is embedded. You're going to take the link to that thing that it's embedded in and you're going to share those or take the link to the lesson or to the vault or the online class and you'll be sharing that. You also have the ability to share your videos via a direct link, which I'll show you in a moment, and really exciting via email. So let's talk about using a link. Now, when you're in your video manager, all you have to do is look at your videos that are uploaded and you're gonna see there's a checkbox that says Share With Link. This basically means that if you have it unchecked, no one's going to see this video unless it's embedded somewhere on your site. If you have the Share With Link box checked, you now have the option to share the video on its own with whomever you choose. And so what that'll look like is when you click the Share With Link, it will show you this copy link over here on the right. And so you'll be able to grab that and use that to share, right? And so it'll look basically something like this. It'll be yourwebsite.com and then this video will be there. Which is pretty cool. And then this is the most exciting thing to me because it does a couple of things that you don't even have to tell it to do. And it's just such an awesome feature to increase engagement and clicks from your emails. So basically, what we're doing here is we are composing a video, or sorry, we're, excuse me, we're composing an email and we're clicking Add Video. We're gonna have a box pop up. We're going to select the video that we want to share. And then we're going to have this option here of where to link the video because we can't actually send the video via email. It's not gonna be playable in the email, the video itself. It's gonna do something even cooler and I'll show you that here in just a second. But when they click on what looks like the video, they're gonna get to go to one of three places. The first would be just the video, like I showed you a moment ago. There's nothing else on the page. It's just the video. It's on your website. Another option would be to a specific page on your website, maybe where that video lives, right? Or to a specific URL. So maybe that is to a sales page. Maybe that is to some other place entirely, totally up to you. So what we're doing, I'm actually choosing to just show the video on the website. But we're going to click Add Video to Email. And then you can actually see that there is this cool thumbnail that populates, right? Now, what happens when we send this email is it's actually animated. So when they receive the email, they're going to get a quick view of what's in it and it's engaging enough for them to want to click. And this is just such a cool, cool thing, right? And you don't even have to figure anything out to do this. You just say, I want to send that and it will create this, this gif for you, which is super cool, right? So cool. Alright, so let's get into live help and Q and A. I know there's been some, some questions asked and answered already, but feel free to keep them coming. And, and of course, if you're looking for live help, definitely make sure that, definitely make sure that you ask in the Q and A. So the statistics, well, these are both new videos, Allison, that are uploaded in here. But I mean, I can show you what they look like on the page itself, just where you'll find them. Obviously, we just launched this. So, but when we click View Statistics, this is what it'll look like. So you'll actually be able to see how many people have viewed, the length of the video, average watch time, total watch time, the size of the video. And then of course, you'll be able to see these statistics over time for all of the videos that you select that for.
Yeah, there is this status at the top of that too. Like if it fails for some reason, like if you pick a bad file or whatever, it'll say error or it'll say, you know, encoding or processing or whatever. So if you're not sure about it and it's not ready, you can click on there and then you can see the status.
Yeah, that's right. Awesome. So this will actually, if for whatever reason, you're seeing an issue or you're not able to, like it's not playing or whatever, go look at the statistics and you'll see whether or not it's ready to play, which is great. Let's see, another question here from Allison. So is the process similar for editing a class with a YouTube video to having it host on Get Oiling? So, so no, it's, if you're putting a video into an online class, it is, it's basically identical to what you would have done previously. It's just instead of selecting a URL, you're selecting a video from your video manager or uploading. So this is actually where I think I might have put it. So here's Upload. You could also paste a link. So this is what you would have done previously, right? Like you would have gone wherever your video was hosted, Vimeo, YouTube, Wistia, et cetera. And you would have pasted in right here. But instead, what we do is we can actually select a video that we already have. I'm gonna click Select. And I will hit Save and then this actually becomes the, this actually becomes the video for this, for this lesson, which is pretty cool, right? And once it's in there and it's embedded, you can actually, or the user can speed up. There's, you know, captions. They could go picture in picture. They can go full screen, just like you would with any other standard video player. How do we get it in that place to select? So you can from right there, from where I just showed you, Allison, you can actually upload a video from there. So if you haven't already put it in your video manager, you can upload a new video from right there on that lesson page where you're editing. Dr. Brown says, I'm on a premium plan. Does this work like pages where if I delete a video, it frees up space for a different one? What happens to those links? Like if I've sent it out in an email? So when you delete one, it does free up space and I guess the, the link, Greg, what, what would happen there? Would it be like, would it go to a 404 page if you're actually literally sharing the link to a video that doesn't exist anymore?
It goes to your website homepage. It doesn't have a file not found. So it'll at least send them somewhere relatively nice if you turn it off. And the same thing would happen if you uncheck that Allow Sharing box. You could do that too, which would be kind of like deleting it from a share. So both of those situations will just forward them to their homepage. So it'll look like the link didn't, I mean, it'll still go somewhere, but it won't be broken.
Got you. Perfect. Awesome. Great questions. Is there anything, Greg? Did I miss anything? Is there anything else that you want to, to include here?
No, I think you covered it all. There's a lot of little tidbits in there. Nice, nice things, but such time savers really, you know, especially with the Zoom recording.
Oh my gosh, yeah, that's such a huge one. I mean, if, if you guys, I know you meet on Zoom. If you're having your care calls on Zoom, which why wouldn't you? You know, you can record to the cloud and you don't even have to worry about knowing like how to download and upload and do all this stuff. You just click a button and it just moves right over. That's, that's even more exciting, I think, than, than the gifts and I'm excited about those. Okay, another question from Allison. If I have a modern companion campaign with pictures, but I want to use those pictures separately in the vaults or another message, those pictures don't show up in Get Oiling, but I need to go to my downloads or wherever the photo might be. So if you've imported content from a content provider and that content is set into a, is set into a feature in Get Oiling, like a campaign or a saved reply or something like that, it's not going to be in your Downloads folder because you didn't download it, right? Or sorry, you didn't upload it to your system. So the first thing I would, I would double check and make sure that you have permission to use their content in a way separate from what you've purchased. I would double check with that first. But the other way to, you know, if you wanted to retrieve something like that, provided that that is okayed, is you could just simply send that email to yourself and then download the image file from, from your email. And guys, if you have any other suggestions on how you might obtain something like that, please chime in. Dr. Brown asks, can I cut and edit videos with this feature? As of this moment, no. So if it is something that you want to have, if you have a recording of something and you know that you want to modify it before you put it into your, into your system as sort of permanent content, then I would definitely download to your system, trim it and then upload the finished product. Let's see. Alright, so Stephanie Gregory had signed up to work together live. So if you're ready to chat, Stephanie, if you could raise your hand and let me know. And we can start chatting. And of course, you guys, if you have any more questions about video, we're excited to walk through anything with you and share with you. So definitely be putting those questions into the Q and A. Hi, Stephanie.
Hi.
Thanks for coming out. Yeah, I can hear you. How, how can we help today?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm feeling really stupid, so I'm gonna try to, I don't know. I haven't listened to all of the lessons and so I've been stuck because I'm figuring, well, if I listen to all the lessons, I probably would have my question answered. But it's so overwhelming that I'm like, well, I can't get going. Here's the,
That's literally why we have this call. It's totally,
Okay, good. Okay, good. So when I, I just started sending out an email and it has my address on the bottom of it. But I, I don't want my address to go to everybody I send emails to, but I don't edit that.
Got you. Okay, so I'll show you where to edit it. There is an important caveat here. You do need to have some kind of an address. That is, it's like there's a legal requirement. And, and so you do want to make sure that you come up with something, maybe get, you know, like a virtual office address or something like that, a P O Box, whatever. I think you are actually required to have a street address. I'm pretty sure CAN SPAM requires a street address. So what you do is you click your name up here on the right. And all of the stuff that you have here is what will show up in that email footer as your information. And it shows up, of course, elsewhere on your site as well.
Okay. Okay. So you have to, so when you do these things, you always have to have an address. What do you mean a virtual address? What, what is, what is that?
Yeah, yeah. So like a virtual business address. Um, you know, as an example, if you incorporate, right, as an LLC, maybe you want to be an S corp, whatever. If you don't want the public address for your business to be your home address, I certainly don't. Then, then you, you, you buy, you know, you rent one of these, these things. And so I have one, I use iPostal one for it. And it's like a hundred bucks a year. And I literally like my address is in Manhattan. It's a hundred bucks a year. So, um, so yeah, that's, and that basically for what I do includes, you know, just, you know, they can receive mail and forward it to me. I can, you know, review it, whatever. But, um, if you're incorporated as a business, or even if you are, you know, DBA or whatever your designation
I just, I did just get an LLC, um, in partnership with my mom and I live with her. She's a widow now. And so we did it together for our, you know, future business, but I haven't learned all that stuff yet. So I bet I could ask them since I just went through prime tax people and all that. I don't know if you're familiar with them.
I'm not, but it's going to be pretty straightforward. You're going to just, you're going to want to make sure that you establish the address. And you might need to, you might need to do some kind of minor, you know, $10 filing with the state to change your business address, but that's basically it.
Okay, perfect. Okay. That was one. And then the other question was, um, I'm still using my, my phone, my Apple Pro, you know, 11 Pro phone for all my videos. But I'm having a heck of a time getting the videos downloaded onto my computer. Even when I try, I tried the Vimeo and it's just, it's been a pain. It's like, well, nope, you gotta upgrade. I'm like, I did upgrade, you know, like it's still, it seems so easy for everybody else. I've finally learned how to add photos to my Facebook page from my phone. That's easy. Facebook made that easy. But all my videos are like 10 minutes or so. And I don't know how to get them to my computer.
Yeah. So, uh, you can now just log into Get Oiling from your phone and, and upload from your phone into your Get Oiling.
Really?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that is very easy. Um, so it's, it's called a track well, isn't it on my app?
So that's the app, but that, that is the app. Yeah. You download a track well, and then you would, um, and then you would put in your Get Oiling, uh, email address, the one, the one that you use for Get Oiling. And then, um, and then, yeah, it's, it's going to send you an email to confirm. You click the button and then you can use the app. You could also, if you're just on your phone, uh, just if you wanted to get these videos off of there. Uh, obviously the, the app is something that I highly recommend that you get and use, but you can also just log into Get Oiling from your phone and go to your video manager and you could just upload that way too.
Okay. Um, then the third question was, I want to change my, my website name. And I want to change, you know, like, I don't want it to be like a young living landing page, right? And I don't want to say Get Oiling slash Stephanie Lynn, you know, I want it to be. I don't even know what yet, but I don't even know how to do that. So.
Yeah. So the first thing that you'll want to do definitely is to figure out what you want that name to be. Um, it could be the name of your business. Uh, it could be, I mean, you did mention that there's something that you're doing with your mother. Maybe you guys kind of think up something that could, could work well. I, I know that whoever is going to be the person who's on camera and delivering the content. It's the, I would recommend that you brand around that name. So if it's with stephanieland.com or something like that. Um, you know, that could be whatever it is. But once you've decided that, just reach out to our team, just reach out to support at goodoiling.com. Let us know what you'd like to, it, it to be. And then we can talk through the different options with you.
Okay, okay, good. And then, um, to clarify about the videos that you just, we're now able, um, those are ours. Like if I move them off my phone onto my Get Oiling website. That's permanent, like that's a permanent holding place and I own it. It's like, that's really cool.
Yeah, it's yours and you can use them however you want on your website.
That's really great. Thank you. I think that's my questions for now.
Awesome. Glad we could help. Oh, and Stephanie, by the way, I don't know if you have started going through it yet. There's obviously a million directions you could go and a lot of training you could get into on our YouTube channel. But are you, um, enrolled in the, um, marketing mastery workshop series?
No, but I probably needed.
This is actually, so if you want to follow kind of a step by step and kind of getting all of your ducks in a row, you want to go to my account settings. And then you want to scroll down here to marketing mastery workshop. Matter of fact, I'm, I'm in here in your account right now. Do you want to sign up?
Yes.
Okay, cool. You're going to get an email. Awesome. So you're, um, you're going to get an email and that'll get you into the private member area that has all of that content. So I would recommend maybe working through that one system at a time and we'll make sure that we cover all the bases. And I also go over, you know, the, like, do you want like the okay right now, which you do, because we, we don't want to wait until something is some idealized version of perfect to move forward in business, but, um, but then we also talk about optimized options you can be working towards. So, um, it's, it's definitely a meet you where you are thing. I would recommend starting there.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, absolutely. Handheld here.
Good. That's what this is for. That's exactly what this is for. I'm so glad you're able to take advantage of it today.
All right. Thank you.
Sure thing. All right. Gary says, I'm just starting out. I need help on how to share my website. I have people who want to order, not sure what to do. Oh, Gary, that's awesome. Uh, do you want to come out and chat? Will you raise your hand for me? If you are able to, um, if you're able to talk, I'd be happy to bring you out to talk. Let me see. Okay. Nope. Maybe not. Okay. Uh, but the, the short answer is here, I'll, I'll just, I'll show in case you check the, um, just in, in case you, you actually check the recording. So if you go to your dashboard, I'm still in Stephanie's account. View my site and share my site. This is where you can actually look at what your website looks like. Share my site. So you have your direct young living referral link right here. If you put in your young living number, number when you signed up, then this is actually going to send them straight off to Young Living. And then of course you have your website link and all of the links that are on your built-in themes are going to include your young living member numbers. So if maybe they click on a product, if they choose to add it to their cart, if they choose to, um, create a, a recurring order with it, then you would of course get credit for that sale. So, oh, there we go. Hi. Let me know you can hear me. It looks like you're muted, Gary. If you're able to unmute. There we go. Hi.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah. So I'm just getting started and just wondering how to set up my, uh, website and share it. And I, cause I already have people that want orders and I'm not sure what to do.
Yeah, fantastic. So first congrats on the growth of your business. Your website as it stands right now, you do have a, a landing page here. What I would recommend doing first, uh, is, um, if you want to share your website, uh, just as a tool moving forward. I would go over here to my story and photo, put in a picture of you, put in, you know, your, you know, your name and a little bit about you. And that's going to really kind of give more, uh, let me find my link here. There we go. It's going to give more life to this, um, to this built-in theme, right? Because then it's going to actually have a picture of you and your story, et cetera. So that's bare minimum, what I would, I would recommend doing is, is making sure you have this filled out. Now, if somebody's ready to place an order, if you go under share my site, your direct young living referral link is right here. So all you have to do is click it. And, uh, and then just copy that link and send it, send them straight off. It's also always going to be your website.com or goodoiling.com slash whatever your, your handle is, uh, slash start. Right? So it's your website.com slash start is always going to send them to your young living referral link. So that's, if they're ready to order, that's, this is the link that I would use right here.
Okay.
Yeah. I hope that helps. And then also, um, just the same as I shared with Stephanie Gary. I highly recommend if you're just getting started and you're wanting to kind of figure out what the most important steps are to take first. I think that you're going to find a lot of that, especially in getting your system set up visually and functionally in this marketing mastery workshop. So, um, this is, um, there are pre-recorded lessons in here, but we also do have a couple more live workshops, um, that you can attend. And of course, any questions that you have about what's in here, you could join a live call just like this one to get help.
Okay. Yes. Thank you much.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for coming out. All right. I think I saw Carrie Gale. You've got your hand up. Would you like to chat? Let me see. Can you let me know in, um, in the chat here if you would like to talk? I would be happy to, uh, bring you out. Okay. Perfect. Hi.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. So last week I explained that I've been working with one of your team members and trying to build out uh, some, a page. What we're trying to figure out, and I don't know if anyone's spoken to anyone, but um, my theme is the one that Gary just had. Is it possible to have the page that we're building, but then have that theme page in the back? So you have all that info about the young living stuff behind, like it's just a page that like another page that they can go to?
Yeah. Oh yeah, absolutely. Uh, so when that's no longer one of you, like your homepages, there's a couple of ways to do this. The first, the first one that I find just a really easy way to just have quick access to it is to create a leg builder link. Uh, and so in this case, I believe that that is called, what is that one called? Is that healthy living?
Healthy. Oh, I thought it was healthy homes, but
Oh, maybe it is. Yeah, let's, let's go, let's go look at that one. Yeah. Healthy homes. Uh, and then, uh, of course you would put in your name and of course you'd put your referral ID, et cetera. And actually I think this is going to, Greg, this automatically populates if you're making it for yourself, right?
Yeah, you don't have to put that in.
Okay, got you. So we do need a link path though, and this is going to be healthy homes. Um, and so that's going to be what the address is. Right? So now this link right here, you could always just grab this link and copy it. And that's what you can share. And so even though, you know, your website is custom, you still have the ability, uh, or you're working on a custom page. This will still be something that can show up, uh, wherever you want it to. And a quick aside as well, and you'll find this, um, you'll find this in the brand, my business workshop, but I reference it in the marketing mastery workshop. In module one, I go over this and there's actually a really cool template that includes links to a lot of the built-in themes. I know that, um, you're in Canada, there's a very minor modifications that you would make to a page like that to actually have it, um, you know, basically they go to one page. And then from that one page, they could go and visit any of them. And so, uh, yeah, and I actually go over that in detail inside of that course.
In the ma, sorry, the mastery course?
Yeah, the marketing mastery one. You'll find that in module one. Where we talk about your website.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Can we help with anything else?
No, that's great. Okay, solves a lot of problems.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Always looking to get more of those problems solved. All right. Nancy says, I have been adding my to-do daily month, weekly, monthly and quarterly tasks. It takes a lot of time. I asked if there is a way to have recurring tasks, but I don't think we can yet. Can you show how you do this? So I can make sure I'm doing it efficiency, efficiently. So Nancy, the way that I recommend doing this for recurring tasks, it's really going to depend on, it's going to depend on the task, right? Um, basically what I would do is for a quarter is probably the extent of time that I would, I would draw something out. For a quarter, I would set up a, a follow-up plan, right, for myself. And I would apply that, like I maybe make sure that I have a reminder for myself, a to-do for myself. I'll set up, you know, a year for that year. I'm going to give myself a reminder on the first day of each quarter to apply the quarterly follow-up plan to my contact. And so then you can have that happening, right? But it does require a, a quick step from you. But I do think that it's kind of important that you maybe have it set up that way as opposed to just autopilot the same task. Because oftentimes we do kind of need to look at what we're doing and evaluate whether or not it's still the right thing. And quarterly is a really good opportunity to revisit that. So essentially, um, and let me go into Jane's account so I can show you. I can show you how I would do this, but essentially what we're doing. Here we go. Okay. So I'm going to go and create under contact settings. I'll create a follow-up plan for myself. That's right here. Uh, I'm going to call this, uh, quarterly tasks. And then of course I would create, you know, task one, et cetera, right? And I would, I would add these things in. Now, once this is done, um, what we're going to do is I'm going to go into my contacts and find myself. And actually I think Jane is in here as herself. Here we go, Jane, right here. Perfect. So here's Jane. So I'm going to go ahead and add it to do, uh, and that's going to be so. So April 1st, I'm going to have a reminder to apply quarterly follow-up plan. Add to do. And then I'm going to go in as well, and I could just go ahead and do this right now. Uh, July 1st, I'm going to apply quarterly follow-up plan, right? So you can just set yourself these to-dos. Um, and then all, all you're really going to have to do is just go in and add that to do, that follow-up plan to yourself, right? So you just go to edit your contact. And then you add that follow-up plan. Write that quarterly tasks. So that is what that would look like. But don't delete yourself like I almost just did. Okay, um, let me see what else. Yeah, feel free to ask any other questions that you guys have. If you want to see anything else as it pertains to video, uh, you want to learn more about how you can use it, feel free. Let's see, uh, Allison, I'm adding those. So that's Jane's account. And so yes, you're adding it to yourself. I was adding it to Jane. Uh, she has her own contact. Cause as a young living brand partner, you're uploading your V O file and you are a part of your V O file, right? So add those follow-up plans to your contact. Okay. What else? I want to hear what you guys are planning to do now that you know you have video with Get Oiling. Tell me what you are going to be doing in your system. What kind of ideas are popping up for you? What are you going to begin? Like, how many of you have Vimeo and you're about to go let that go? Bring everything over here and make your life simpler. That is, it's just such an exciting prospect. And I know this has been, um, a request for quite some time. And big props to Greg for making this thing happen. And, um, and, and this is not where it ends, you guys. As always, there's, there's more where this came from and even more improvements that are in the pipeline for this very feature. So, uh, stay tuned and, uh, and be in touch with us with what you are, are helping to do with it. Cause that's ultimately how these features get shaped is how do you use it? How will you be using it? So, um, Allison says, if I wanted you guys to create a basic prospect vault, what's the price range? So that's something that you'll probably want to reach out to the team to have quoted, because it really depends, because a basic prospect vault can mean a lot of things to different people. So I would go to goodoiling.com slash concierge and one of the incredible people from our team will be able to quote you on a project like that. And obviously answer the, have you answered the appropriate questions to get you a quote? I will say this though, Allison, for a prospect vault, a lot of that content's going to need to be, uh, from you. Because, uh, prospects are people who need to get to know you better before they can open up to the idea of making a decision, uh, that you would put in front of them. So you'll want to have some basic structure there. Uh, I would assume where young living is concerned, maybe you want to compile some videos either from you or from somewhere else. Maybe have a few of those lessons, but a lot of what you're going to be doing in a prospect vault is engaging, I would think. Let's see what else.
Somebody had asked.
Yes.
Sorry. Yeah, I saw something scrolled by here about, uh, can you import from another zoom account, like a standalone zoom account? I believe you can, as long as you can get to a download link, um, like a download link that, you know, when you click it, it would directly copy it to your file or download it to your computer. You can just right-click and copy that and then put that in there. And then I'll just do it right over. Or I mean, you can always download it to your computer and then upload it. So either way is totally fine. But yeah, it's been worked with standalone zoom too, in case you have that.
Perfect. Um, okay. Linda says, I may have missed this answer. Is there a size of videos or how many? So the way that this is set up currently is it's per video. And you have a certain number of videos available in your account. And so you can actually see the full range on our plan levels uh, on goodoiling.com if you click pricing. But if you're logged in and you go to your video manager, it'll tell you how many videos you have. And you can of course add more if you want. I believe if I can go and find and reference my slides. Let me see if I can find that real quick and I can share that with you. It's up at the beginning here, I think. Yeah, here we go. So at, um, Seed and Starter, you can add on, basic is 10 videos, premium 50, pro 200 and diamond 500. So if I wanted to make a content calendar to plan my content, I figure I could create and use a follow-up plan. But I'd love to see it in a calendar view. Is there a way to do this and get oiling? Or should I use iCal Trello, Google Calendar, et cetera? So there's, I've, I've definitely seen marketing plans, uh, created and executed at scale. Uh, meaning like one person created it and others followed what she created. Marketing plans specifically. So, um, that's not going to be create this content on this day. It's going to be more task oriented in a general sense. And that's really what follow-up plans are great for. For a content calendar, especially where your content is going to quite often be image-based. I actually think that using something like, uh, Canva, actual, like Canva has an actual content calendar tool that you can use. And you're probably using Canva if you have Good Oiling anyway. Uh, so that's one option. Uh, but ultimately, if you're doing multiple different types of content, um, one of the best systems that I've ever really seen executed for a large-scale content plan is in Trello. And then, um, basically what you're going to want to have for a follow-up plan in your Good Oiling system is going to be task-oriented, right? The details of the stuff that you're doing, you want to be able to house in a place that actually, you know, can store that rich content in a calendar format, which you can do with Trello and on their free versions as well. But then, you know, the actual thing that you need to do, right? Like, um, you know, reach out to five people to let them know you're available for interview this month on podcasts. Like that's the kind of thing you would put into your follow-up plan for yourself and get oiling. Okay. Great questions today. Stephanie says, I was just about to pay Vimeo and now I'm so happy. Awesome. We're excited for you and this really does, um, this really does open up a lot of, of sort of bandwidth for you. When you think about it, you don't have to worry about having to grab something from one place and put it in another. It's just, it's yet another thing you can just kind of bring under one roof and, and manage just as you manage everything else in your business. So we've got a wishlist item here from Allison. I'd love to see a month at a glance calendar, uh, to see my follow-up plans and to-dos. I like that. Cool, cool.